Call a meeting to order at six oh four. Uh, do I need to read these announcements?
Uh, no.
All right. Announcements are on the agenda posted on the town website. Our regular business item A, ongoing active projects and initiatives, discussion of priorities.
Okay, well, so I included. A lot, uh, ba- basically, the, the reason that we wanted to have this discussion tonight, obviously, the board had scheduled a special meeting for executive session. And, uh, I thought since the board was all gonna be together, uh, and it's not a normal agenda with a crowded. Uh, again, that'd be a good opportunity to at least set the table for our future. Kind of a discussion of priorities, uh, I included in the packet, the. Uh, slides that were put together for the goal setting unit in the board and I had early last year in February twenty twenty two. And, uh, updated the exhibit to that, which is basically all of the various projects. Uh, and. I wanna be sensitive to time, cause I know Rick has to leave very early tomorrow and. We might wanna start executive session a bit early to make sure that we have enough time to get, get through all of that before, uh. Rick turns into a pumpkin at eight.
Well, well, I, I still, I still have to pack, so. Now, I, I'm, I'm. And I'm, and I'm getting up at two, so. Believe the hell.
Packed during the day.
I'm doing other things. This, this has been a, a, a nonstop stressful last few days.
Well, that, that's actually, uh, that's exactly, but that's exactly the, the issue we have, so. I, you know, I don't wanna go through all of these in great detail, cause if you read it, you, you get the point. The, the point is there's. We wanna do things right. We don't wanna cut corners. We don't wanna do things in a, in a superficial way. We don't wanna pay lip service to things that we're not actually able to follow through. And, uh. With decentralized form of government that we have, we have directions coming from a lot of different, uh, uh, places. As well as just constituent service, which is part of working in a town is when. An email comes in, the phone rings, someone stops by, you know, you, you tend to that, and that's what we do. And so that's part of, uh. You, you can call customer service or you can call inefficiency. It's, it's really both. Um, it's customer service, but it also, it, it cuts into what you hope to get done that day, and that, that happens every single day, so. You know, we've got a lot of issues, a lot of backlog issues. We have, uh, you know, pared away a lot of those compared to. When I started five years ago, but we still have some issues hanging around that actually go back many, many years. Uh. So my kind of management approach is, um. It's important for the chief elected board, it's the policy setting body. To have as clear a picture as I can give you of what's on the table, what we're actively doing, what we are being asked to do. What we would like to do, but can't find time to do, so that you can, you know, help provide the, the policy direction as to how to best prioritize. Understanding that we can't do everything at once and choices need to be made. Uh, the issue therefore becoming relative important and relative urgency. Um, so. And so I'm gonna skip ahead, go on, go on a number of these, but, you know, I, I do like this triangle. I came up with this when I worked in Westford. Well, thirteen years ago, because there was a real similar dynamic there, um, and, you know, I brought this to my town manager. She thought it was great. And we actually used this as a jumping off point to do exactly this. We actually did this for the, we didn't do it for everything going on in Westford. But we did it for the comprehensive, comprehensive master plan, which had been approved a short time before I started there. So when I started, there was a lot of appetite in the community of, we gotta implement the master plan. And, um, going to the monthly department head meetings and working with different departments, it was really clear. That a lot of the actions that were in the master plan were in fact either being done or in some cases were done. And so I talked to my manager. I said, it sounds like we're not doing a good enough job communicating to the residents. What is already happening, cause we should do that first and then build on that rather than just this. Kind of, oh, we need to implement the master plan. You know, we, we, we're doing a lot of things every single day that, that were exactly that, so. So I put this matrix together. She thought it was great. We sent it around to every department head. We had them self. Uh, basically fill out for themselves which of the issues of the hundred and sixty some odd. Uh, action items of the Westford master plan, which ones they perceive themselves to be either in charge of or it's, you know, having some supporting role. Or not necessarily having any role, but wanting to be in the loop as those went forward. So we best, so we came up with those three. Categories of project manager, projects of four were in the loop. We passed those around, everyone filled them out, got them back. I compiled them and basically put together the aggregate result of that, which is similar to, to what you see here. And it was really helpful, um. In illustrating the relationships between different departments on some of these initiatives, including some where it's not necessarily intuitive. Uh, and this is a, you know, silly example, but when a zoning bylaw. Gets amended, the town clerk's office is responsible for getting that paperwork to the attorney general's office and. Uh, you know, staying on it to make sure that gets approved, because the bylaw amendments don't take effect until the AG signs off. That sounds like a really routine, automatic thing that just happens, but we know that's not the case here at West Newbury. In fact, there were. Examples where years went by and the paperwork wasn't even submitted. So that's where it's, you know, I know this, cause I work here, and I think those of you who've been around know this as well. We can't assume that there's much of anything, especially in the finance and administration area, that just happens. It all requires. Someone to do it. That means someone knows, has to know. They need to do it as part of their job. So there's some things like, um, you know, that I would consider baseline services that really. Ought to be on autopilot, but very much were not when I started here. Some of them, we've had to kind of start from scratch. Others, uh, we've learned by observing that they weren't really being done correctly, and so we've had to re, you know, re, uh. And figure out how some of those baseline services are performed, all which is part of. The process when you have staff turn over and, uh, training and getting people kind of up to speed on, on their job. And needless to say, we've changed a lot of job descriptions. Since I've been here and, and with the way study, we have attempted to change basically all of the non-military job descriptions. And even some of those are, are continuing to change. So that's all been. An effort to make more clarity for employees as to what's expected of them. Which that allows for accountability, cause you can't really hold someone accountable if, if. Management was never clear in the first place about what the expectation was. So, um, you know, crises typically. Displace kind of the value added, uh, which is the kind of projects and initiatives. Um, but the baseline services have to be maintained. Come, you know, hell or high water, they have to be done. And so my, my management philosophy with staff is. You know, if something, you know, if they gotta do something like they, that's, you know, in this department head, they have to make those decisions as to what. Have to get done and, and if. Um, if there's limited bandwidth for, for new special projects, I need to be sensitive to that and make sure I calibrate the. Expectations to something that's achievable and not just later on. You know, I see an employee's at the breaking point. You know, that's not the time to coach out seven new projects. So. Uh, one of the challenges we've had here in West Newbury is, uh, maintaining focus on things week in, week out, because every single. Day, there's new projects coming along and it's often, you know, uh. I'm often called on whether it's by this board or, or other, other boards and committees or, or whatever. To respond to the latest thing, so we do that, but, but sometimes, you know, I'm trying to keep up with what we said we would do. Several weeks ago, a month ago, or eight months ago, that we still haven't found time for. Um, so, this, this slide's important, cause I think this is really, um. Kind of fundamental to Massachusetts town government, which is that. For many, if not most, if not all town staff positions, the job description responsibilities demand all of the positions budgeted hours or more. And in my observation of working for many, many towns over the years, that's very common from municipal governments, and I think it's directly tied to Prop two and a half, where there was a. A cap on, on how much municipalities could expand their, um. Bikes, and that's been in effect for now forty, forty-three years, give or take. So what I'm referring to is value-added projects and initiatives. Uh, and I can tell you this from direct experience, are often advanced in snippets of time. Between the completion of the core responsibilities. There's, it's not like, uh, for the most part, departments. Uh, with the exception of like the project manager position we created last year with VPW. Most positions are, you know, booked on their day job, and all of these projects are kind of competing for. The remainder of their time. Uh. So, uh, you know, a lot of this gets done in, in extra hours work, you know, people working nights and weekends, and, and that's really the only way some of this stuff. Sees any progress at all. Um. So, you, you know, thankfully resolved a lot of this with the, uh, issue of the finance department having no assigned. Uh, you know, a lot of things that even happened that weren't in job description, you know, parks and racks, summer rack, a lot of that was a big part of that. Uh, thankfully, we've resolved a lot of that, but. When you see senior staff with either unused or under, underutilized vacation time. And those individuals are routinely working extreme hours. Those are indicators of systemic stressors and are prevalent here. I think there's, um. It's not across the board, but there's definitely some offices that are. Extremely stressed and stretched, that we need to be sensitive to that. I need to be sensitive to that as a manager. Um. So, you know, this slide on the email, it's kind of interesting, cause you just, the volume is, is quite extraordinary. I run these reports every, every one to three months. It only takes about four minutes to download the data. Sometimes I don't get back to look at it till later, but I try to download the data every month or two, and. Every time I look at it, it, it reinforces the similar pattern of, of both the volume as well as the. Uh, the spread across the organization in terms of the amount, you know, that's just one metric, but. It's, it's quite, um. Crushing, you know, that if, if I take a day off, you know, coming back to the volume of correspondence is, is. Quite a lot. If I take a week off, I will never catch up. I will never find time. That's why thankfully we have Rebecca, she can keep an eye and make sure things don't get missed or split through the cracks, but. But that, uh, redundancy was absolutely essential, cause it's just the volume is, is, is so extraordinary. Uh, you know, I come from a background of project management, and in my consulting life, uh, I managed a lot of projects, had a, a tremendous amount of success. And, uh. You know, I know what it takes to get major projects done, and obviously private sector and public sector are two very different things, but. When we were looking at bidding on a job, whether that was a zoning amendment or a downtown revitalization, or a forty yard smart built zoning, or. Infrastructure financing, or those were kind of the things that we did. If we, you know, we would look at the budget, the estimated duration, whether it was four, five, six months, seven months. And kind of, and look at our billable rates and see if we could pencil out. That we could, um. You know, make a sustained commitment of time. And, um. You know, the average, you, you can see the average number of, you know, staff hours as a consultant to some of these projects was, you know, four hundred and sixty hours. Um, and, uh, about fifty-six, fifty-seven hours. A month, and I knew as project manager, if I couldn't commit at least. Four to six hours per week through the duration of the project. There were things I would not be able to get to, because that was the level of effort it took, so. If we looked at a project and we couldn't pencil out that you could sustain that level of investment, you know, do the work within the budget. We wouldn't go after the job, because we'd learned and we got burned many, many times where we. Ended up doing, you know, bulk billable hours so far beyond the budget that our effective rate was like ridiculous. I mean, you run out of business that way, you, you. And, uh, we actually did that for a while. Unfortunately, we were working. Completely ridiculous hours and having very good success. Professionally, but financially not making any money. This, our billings won't be too low. Um, that's another story.
So I guess, how many projects typically were going on with those?
Uh, there were, there were individual that my, when I. My peak, there was a period of time I was managing eleven projects simultaneously, so that was way. Way too many, uh, but, you know, there's, we were a small firm, we, we, you know, and, uh. You have strike ball, iron's hot. One of the very difficult things about public sector consulting is. You don't know what jobs you're gonna get, so if you're seeing RFPs come along and they're right in your wheelhouse. And you might have four or five other proposals out there, but you don't know if you're gonna land any of those, uh. And so you have to kind of keep going after new work, cause you gotta keep your pipeline full. We, we tried to keep four to six months. Ahead under contract. We felt good about that, cause we knew. You know, over that time, we, we would get new work and it would all kind of go forward, but if you got to where you have like less than four months under contract, that. You know, that's a little nerve wracking, cause, uh, you can fall off a cliff in terms of billable hours, so. Um, there were definitely times that we got more work than we. Really could handle, and we did it, we delivered, but we worked, you know, we were under extraordinary strength in terms of. You know, the hours was like way beyond, uh, anything that's rational, so. So the point here is that, you know, the distance between the idea and the execution is measured in hundreds of hours. Um. And so, you, you know, it's all well and good to say, oh, let's do this, but, but we just need to know that before we take on those commitments is it. You know, it takes a lot of time. Um, and so I, I look at this partly as a professional ethics issue, uh, in terms of. You know, not taking something on unless you actually have the bandwidth to see it through, otherwise. One could argue you're actually misleading, you know, whether it's a client or the public or whoever's asking you to do something. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll do that, but, but. You know that like. You don't know what you're, how you're gonna do what you're already committed to do, so like, what are you doing taking on new, new projects? That's. That's really how I look at it from a project management standpoint. It's not. That's, it's not the same in the public and private sector, because in the public sector, you're asked to do, you know, a hundred things, and, and that's fine. People can ask, because. They're taxpayers and, or sometimes they're state agencies that are gonna require things of you or whatever, but. Certainly in the private sector, you have, you, you can't be going and just taking on work and setting yourself for your client not to fail. So, you know, I put together this matrix back in, in Westford, you know, twelve, twelve years ago. Um, it was really, this is intentionally grayed out just to kind of illustrate kind of how it works, but the idea is. You have like a color coding, which is kind of nice at a glance to be able to see what's either completed in green. On going in yellow, we're not yet started, we're not starting in a meaningful way, it's red. Uh, then you've got, uh, kind of the summary of what the project or initiative is. Um, the kind of prime mover, you know, where did the idea come from? Is it a mandate? Is it the select board? Is it my own initiative? Is it a different committee? Is it the state, you know, state agency, whatever? Uh, but I think that's always important. Um, the, uh. Category, you know, I've been doing more of this kind of working groups here at the town office to get, to get different department heads organized. Based on these four different categories that you see, uh, finance administration. Uh, I had been calling planning and development. I kind of like land management and planning is a little bit more inclusive. Um, uh, infrastructure and public services. Uh, but I definitely think that's, that's been a good approach for me with department heads, and I've gotten a lot of really good feedback, and I want to continue to do that. Um, to have, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly meetings of these different working groups, so that we can all, you know. Collaborate, know what one another's doing, but also just from a purely. Time management standpoint, if I can, you know, brief six or eight. Departments on a set of issues, that's a much, much better use of my time, and it's all very nice to meet one-on-one with different department heads, and I do that actually quite a lot. But, at the end of the day or at the end of the week, when I'm looking back at like, where did the time go, cause, you know, we're just not getting. Things done, done in the list, you know, I think back and, oh, oh, such and such fell by, we chatted for twenty minutes or this, but, you know, it's always work related. It's always related to projects, so there's, it takes a lot of time just to keep. The key staff aware of what's going on, because it's so dynamic. So, so, yeah, having like group meetings is much more efficient. Uh, then the staffing, we talked about that, and then the timing, which I did go ahead and fill that out on here. Uh, in some cases, that's known, in some cases, that's. Kind of what we're hoping to do, but, you know, you can see on there, there is a lot that. I'm hoping to get done by the end of September, uh, which we'll either do or, or not do, and I really wanna do it, but to do that means. Trying to manage some of the new stuff that's coming in and, and kind of, uh. Hold it a day. I, I hate to say that, but that's, there's just only, only so many I listen to that. So, so I had put this together, and I did put together hard copies of this for each of you. And I don't know how far we wanna, uh, so there's three of those, and then I also have the. Matrix with this kind of coding system. Because if each of you, so the first three pages of this are, uh. Are mandated services, and there's a couple of things that are, you know, a little subjective, could be in one category, the, or the other. But the first three pages are things that really have to get done. Um, so I don't know, like insurance, so. I know in the month of August, I'll, you know, be probably put in. Eight hours personally on updating the insurance schedules. We always have a policy review with the insurance rep. They come up here, they're here half a day. It's, it's, you know, and I've got more staffing involved with this, but it's like, it's just, it always happens. It's always in August. It always takes a bunch of time. You know, those are things that I just need to account for, even though this is the last thing I want to do, but I have to do it, and there's a lot of stuff on here like that. Um. I mean, I can, I can go on, um, but, uh, but on the specifics, and, and I would encourage you, the reason I gave you all these details is if you have questions on any one of these. Ask me, cause you may say, well, that looks weird. What's that all? I'll tell you what it's all about, but. But then the next three pages, pages, um, four to six, these are the ones that I consider kind of a projects initiatives, the, the kind of value added stuff that's not. For the most part mandated functions, uh, is more stuff we're trying to get done to be a stronger community. And, uh, this is where. The board directing really comes into play, cause you, you might look at this and you might see something that I'm listing as a. Baseline service and say, oh, that doesn't look important to me. Why do we, why, you know, do we really have to do that? Why do we have to do that? That's a totally fine thing to ask me, but this, the, the last three pages that are really the. Core of this exercise is to get some direction on. You know, among all of these things, what are. Most important and what are most urgent, and part of why I really like that. That six box matrix is that it allows you to say, this issue is really, really important, but it's not a current issue, it's a future issue. Uh, and there's, there, you know, that's really important, cause, cause often, I think part of why public sector is so. Keen on like putting. Things on agendas every two weeks and kind of keep pressing it, is, is people feel like that's. Though, you know, make sure people haven't forgotten and make sure reinforces that it's a priority. Often that's not the best way to manage a project, and, and I mean, Wendy, you know this very well, we work on the seventy agenda. Sometimes you wanna put four or six weeks between. That topic agenda, so that there's time for meaningful progress. If it's every two weeks, you're just jumping through hoops and spending more time. Preparing for the next meeting, that actually don't work, and so that's the kind of thing where. You know, it's, it's, it's okay to say something's really important, it's just not this week's issue, and in fact, if you don't say that, it's, it's very self-defeating, because. It's, you know, trying to do everything, and you can't possibly do that, so. Uh, you know, some of these things, um. There might be a lot more going on than you might realize, or, or, or certainly there is more going on than the average. Resident or, or taxpayer would realize, you know, something, I'm just to pick one, the Arturo Riverwoods, um. Land acquisition, parking and access, you know, I think in people's mind, okay, that, we bought, we voted to buy that lands, you know, that's, that's all set. But it's not all set, you know, there's some real questions about where's the partner, where's the access, there's. Then just in the last, you know, six or eight weeks, there's been a site visit, there's been discussions with Greenbell, meetings with Michelle. You know, so, so some of these things that may look like, oh, didn't we already do that? They're on this list because they're still impacting our time. And so you may not know on some of these, like, oh, well, what's, what's going on with that? I'd love to tell you. If we had all night, I would. I'd love to spend four hours to really go through it, but. Uh, you know, we don't have that kind of time, but, um.
So how does this compare to the one you did last year? Were we able to, to knock stuff off?
Oh, yeah, yeah, if I ran a report with all the main ones, there's hundreds of things that we've gotten done, going back to. The first ones that we did in twenty eighteen, which. Uh, yeah, so once they're kind of done, I kind of take them off. Yeah, there are a couple of things on here I put on as really in the, in the baseline. There's just a very few that are. You know, like right now, we don't have any utility pull relocation petitions actively pending, so I marked that complete. We can get one tomorrow, and, you know. You know, it doesn't take a ton of time, but if you add up all the staff and all the touches and. And he's gotta go to Comic Con, maybe he's gotta go to the planning board, because it's a, you know, scenic road. You know, a single utility pole can easily take sixteen hours of staff time before it's all said and done, you know, spread over the course of three months, so it's not that painful, but. And, um, you know, the, the bands we, we issued, you know, we did the continuing disclosure, we re-issued them, that took dozens of hours easily. Um, but we'll have to do that again next break, so even though it's Mark Green, next, you know, starting the first half of, uh. Next calendar year, you know, we can do that again. Uh. You know, the housing monitoring, we sent those letters out, we checked that box for this year, but, you know, if we get a complaint or we get a turnover or something that, that could come right back, and it's been an active thing, so. But no, everything I put here is something that's either ongoing or identified, but not yet started in a meaningful way. Uh.
And one other question, how many of these things are new compared to last year's list?
That's, that's tougher to say. Uh, I can tell you, there was a period in, in January where it was really, really, really crazy. And I started keeping a list just of the new topics coming in. And in the span of five days, I had a page of new issues that had come in that seven day period, you know. So it, it, you know, that tends to be how, how it goes. I'm sure I've missed a few things in here, but I really tried to be complete. I know you've seen different lists and different things. I, I really went through all of those and tried to, you know, this is as complete as I could make it. Um.
So, would there be any sense in, in, um. Is. Not as presented here, but in having a hidden column, where, where as you add, not, not going back and reinventing the wheel, not, not touching things that are already on the list.
Yeah.
What does new things come on? Just have a hidden column, put the initiation date?
Yeah.
That, that might be interesting.
Yeah, that, that would be.
And, and, you know, and it, and it wouldn't, if it was a hidden cell or hidden column, we'd never.
Well, I mean, here, here's an example. So I heard from the librarian, uh, you know, late this afternoon. They don't have a lot of space. They have a lot of programs. They're having good attendance. It's, that's, it's great. They're having great programming that people wanna go to. They'd love to be able to use the whole town hall. It's ninety degrees. They can't. So, you know, she sent me a note and said, had a couple of questions. One is. Would the town consider putting in like, you know, air conditioning units to that building, the whole town hall within? And then the second question she had was regarding people receiving tutoring services. And where the library gets kind of busy and not that quiet. She's wondering, even though the second floor is not, um, handicap accessible. She's wondering, would it be okay to, to allow in individual cases like a tutor and their student to go to the second floor? So, you know, the first one's a, a pretty big deal. That would be getting into the capital program. Obviously, you know, the window issues, the insulation. And you know, would the town really do that without fixing the envelope and, you know, so that's a kind of a big can of worms. Uh, the second one, you know, I'll send a question to, to Sam as our ADA officer and say, is there a problem? But you know, it's not a big deal, but you know, those, those things, um. I'm meeting with a historical commission on Friday, this coming Friday. They have three or four things they're looking to get done, all which, none of which individually seem. That big a deal, but you know, they all, they all, if we're gonna get them done, we'll, we'll take some time. So where I would like to get to with this is to where we as a kind of board manager have, have. We're in full alignment on the priorities. And then, you know, as far as all these Xs and Os, where that fits in is I can then sort this by department. To where I could give each of the departments a clear kind of, um, list of what their priorities are. And that ideally would help them kind of maintain momentum on those things. During periods of time when, you know, maybe I'm otherwise occupied. Cause I think what, what people can do is they, you know, they'll hear and say, oh, this is a real priority. But then like within a day or an hour, I'm working on something else because I got pulled in a new direction. And, and that can send mixed signals as to really is that a priority? Cause you, yesterday you said that was like the most important thing. And now today you're talking about some new issue we've never heard of and. That's like day after day after day. And you know, the combination of that with the fact of me being. Finance director and HR and having a lot of actual operational responsibilities, not just delegating. Like some managers may just delegate, but I have an enormous workload. So. I spend a lot of time at my desk working and that's, doesn't allow me to be out working with departments. Or certainly like, you know, other locations, like I just don't have the time. So in terms of, uh, helping to. Reinforce or, or give people clarity of what the priorities are, I think getting something like this to where. I can kind of handle, you know, maybe we do it annually and for the fiscal year, this is what we're really trying to get done this fiscal year. Uh, and then set up reporting structures so when you have the working group meetings with department heads that we're all briefing each other. And we are right now on some of the things in like Christine's been, Christine, uh. Wallace has been managing or Sue with MBTA communities. We have a really good core now with the land use working group. Where we all really are in sync and we're doing things to coordinate the work on the housing or the transportation or the water. Uh, so that's all good. And I think we can keep doing that, but, but I've got to be able to sustain. You know, having an extra six meetings a month or something in order to sustain those working groups. I haven't even started. With the infrastructure and public services because I started the other two and, you know, it's been hard to even. I mean, I put Christine in charge of the kind of land use ones. So that's good. She, she does the agenda. She. And I need to show up. So that's worked really well, but the finance one, you know, I'd like to do that every week. But in practices, you know, sometimes I'm coming in Monday morning with like a morning full of meetings or deadlines. So I just can't really. Add an extra meeting. So, um, but, but that's what I'm trying to work toward is getting. To where there's actually a reliable list of, of what the priorities are so that people can, um. Kind of, we can all work in parallel on that. Um.
So in terms of mechanics, how, how would we go from this matrix to, to here? I mean, I think last time we, we each did it a little differently. It made it hard to.
Yeah, that's right.
So what, what do you think is the most effective?
Well, so, so I, the, uh, the, I came up with that coding there. Because let's say you each put in, you know, A1, A2, B1, B2, whatever, for each one of these. Uh, and that allows you to say, you know.
Oh, okay.
And, and then if I put that all in, what we did the last time, and it took, it took some time after the February meeting. Partly because they were different formats, but more, more actually because it was budget season and town meeting season, but. So it took a few months to circle back, but what I was looking for was. What are the projects or initiatives that at least two of the board members have identified as. Important or what's the second category or, uh, you know, essential or important? Uh, cause that at least, you know, if there's, if there's only one or zero board members who have identified something as being. Urgent or, you know, or not, or, you know, unnecessary or, or important. That's not probably something to spend a whole lot of time on. Uh, and that gives me some support if there's a different constituent in town who does think that's very important. It's pressing, why haven't we done that yet? I can say, look, you know, the board sets my direction. And then I set ideally, I set the, the department's direction. We go based on the direction the board sets. So at that point, you know, they could lobby the board that they think the issue of, you know, trees falling in no pond. Is like a super important issue. Okay, well, and, and that's where the suggestion that was made, it's come up now a couple of times of. Uh, if a board member was designated as a liaison to each of the twenty-eight or so boards, commissions and committees. I think that can be really good because that gives, you know, that allows everyone to make their case of what they think the town should be doing. But it doesn't, it, it kind of ideally would allow me to keep my, my own time focused and my staff time focused. On the things already on, ongoing. And have the board be thinking, thinking more about, okay, looking ahead, what might we want to add to the list? You know, that way. People have an outlet, but it's not, you know, I don't get into a lot of, you know, spending a lot of time, a lot of back and forth of why we are or are not doing something. Cause at that point, it's often like quicker to just do it. And that's what I'm doing with this investment policy. Our, yeah, I spent seven hours in that last week and I spent more time today. I'm gonna spend more time either tonight or first thing in the morning. Cause I have a call tomorrow at ten. That's not because I think it's more important than things that aren't done. It's because I'm kind of just tired of like talking about why it's not done. So I'm just like. You know, but, but it, it's not, it's not good. It's not, it's not good. It, it doesn't speak to, uh, kind of being able to be intentional about how you spend your time. And, and actually delivering on the things that, that are our priorities.
Yes. I think the intention is you want us to get through and A1, B1. Might it not be more effective to do it as a group? And I know there's a lot here, so.
Yeah.
That's a long meeting, but.
Yeah.
Literally, if you took an egg timer, go, we've got three minutes on each.
Yeah.
At the end of that time, egg timer.
It's yes or no.
And I think because some of these could be like, we really don't care. This is a long-term goal. It's, it's priority. But I, and I probably would start and say, what are the top three priorities that we each come to that have to get addressed?
Yep.
And then let's go through each one of these. I think you can take them off pretty quick. And quite honestly, there's some, I had no idea on, by the way. I just looked upon them. It's like, I don't know what it means. Where was it? Um. Some boring is something I go, I don't know what that means. So, you know, for me to look at some of these, it's not gonna be helpful. And some are like, okay, that's, there, there's potential boring feeling. I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
I mean, so to be the rate that, that's a high priority, no stop. Um, it's irrelevant. But I think we could come to a very quick resolution on the priority.
Yeah.
Maybe not the lower down items, maybe have your input say, that's a, you know, real priority, but it's gonna take a thousand hours. So we might wanna break that down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I got that message very clear at the last meeting. We talked about comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
And to me, that would be a priority, except looking at three pages of other things. So I can sit there and say, let's put that off down the road. Because nobody dies. It doesn't create significant other issues in the interim. So those, that's how I'm gonna prioritize. What, what fire has to be put out first?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, a lot of page school, those kind of things will float to the surface.
Yeah.
And my other comment, and I hesitate to say it, but I will. Um, you do too much. And I think you've gotta start delegating with the people that you trust. Um, you can't do it all and you're gonna fry yourself if you keep this up. We don't wanna see that. Um, I'll use the example, I, um, you talked about the Elliot Fund and, um. You know, I could put together an outline and hand it to you and you could say, jump good, change this, change that. You don't have to do everything. Um, yourself on all these issues, cause it's gonna, it is overwhelming.
Hmm.
Now, I get emails from you on Saturday night at eight o'clock and you hit work and that makes me queasy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm gonna encourage you to delegate to people you trust. And I think you're building. Uh, those significant levels of trust as, as you progress. I know it's been tough with the start.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I, I hope that happens a little more. But I think going through this as a group, we could, you know, literally put time on it. At the end of that three minutes, if you don't have a resolution, that's not a priority. You know, either, either is or isn't.
Hmm.
Um, maybe that's a whole separate meeting, just try and get through and see if we can do it. I don't know.
Yeah, I do think there's value in each of us rating it individually and then bringing that to the meeting for discussion. You know, otherwise we're spending time here thinking about our words.
But I don't know the value of a lot of these things. Fifty to sixty, rather than these blank.
Yeah.
But once having a, a two-minute discussion input.
Yeah.
I can say that makes sense, but a lot of them I'm gonna avoid. Um, and I think with everybody's input. Very quick and concise. We don't have to deep dive into any of this stuff, you know, river road, don't watch. Can say, okay, open space, maybe become a proposal, but right now that's not priority. I don't know. You know, just pick one.
Yeah. So how long do you think that will take? I mean.
I think it'd take more than three minutes, please. Yeah, um, I, I just, well, uh, I mean, I like the idea, Chris. I, I just, um, I'm trying to figure out from a practical standpoint. I, I think if you look at the aggregate of all of our time. There would actually be a more efficient way to get the job done. And particularly, it would be a more efficient way to get it done for Angus. Uh, because, um, which one? Having, having a, a group discussion and, 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 and sort of assigning right then and there, assigning this is, this is where it go. Um, uh, you know, because it leaves less question on your end where, you know, you get the consensus or, or the, the majority perspective. Um, and that's what it is. And, and, uh, you know, we, we're all educated at that point. I just don't think we can all get educated. Sort of mutually educated.
You don't have to get educated. You just have to understand the urgency of the issue with other people's perspective. Like I see.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, Chris, that to get other people's perspective. Um, requires a certain education about the implications of whatever the issue happens to be. It might be really trivial or it might not be really trivial.
Right. So I'll pick one that you probably have a whole lot more information than I do. River Road Resiliency, Engineering Study. To me, that might be a low priority. And if I put that there, that maybe diminishes the opportunity that happened. But you can sit there and in one minute say to me, it's important because of this, this and this. And I go, okay, good. I want board. Let's do it. You know, so I, for me to do it or anybody's to do this in an independent void. I'm not sure it's the best way to do it.
I think, I think as a first pass, it would be useful. I think you can sort them and, and then present that to us at a meeting and then we can discuss and finalize.
Yeah, I mean, I, when I, when we started this for last February, the idea was exactly what, what you were saying, Chris, was, was to have a, a, a workshop. Saturday, like where that was anything on the agenda and to spend, you know, the better part of the day, whatever it took. Cause it was that important. Yeah. Um, and, and it's still it. I would be very, very happy to, to set up and facilitate whether it's a Saturday or some off night, you know, evening. But it would have to be a, a big block of time, you know, at least like four hours. Um. But I think doing something together would be, would be great. I think, you know, if, if you fill them out ahead of time. Or just put question mark for things that that, I, I do think Wendy's right, that that would be a good starter, cause at least that would give me. You know, some, some indicator of like what we think the shortlist might be. Uh, and then also I think it'd be a good opportunity, uh, you know, for anything that there are question marks to give more backup. Or, or what do you, or just to spend the two minutes to outline what is that issue and where it's gonna come from and.
I'm happy to fill it out, but I don't think what I put down is gonna have significant relevance, cause it will greatly change based on the input of the three of you.
Yep.
Right. So I, in that case, I would leave it blank, if that's how you feel. So two minutes, even if we did two minutes each, are we literally talking four hours to get people on this?
It was three minutes each or it was two minutes each and you're thirty, thirty items per hour. Um, how many items are?
Ninety items, I think total. It's about ninety.
So two hundred and seventy minutes. You know, four hours and thirty minutes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure we can keep to the egg timer unless it's a hammer.
Oh, no, I, I, I would agree with you.
Well, that was, that was my concern is that.
Yeah, so that's why I'm, I think it's a good idea conceptually, but.
But I think you can because either it's a priority or it's not. And the squishy ones, if you want an extra minute, turn the timer, you get one more minute. But on ninety percent of you're gonna go.
Oh, I love that.
That power's gonna go to my head.
All right. So when should we, I mean, we need to do soon.
I think so. I mean, I, you know, part of the timing on this, Wendy and I talked last week is where you guys are sending out this BCC flyer. That really aligns nicely with, with what we're trying to do here. Because I think we all collectively, to, to a greater and lesser extent, have our ear in the ground in terms of what the different committees are working on. What their priorities are, but I think this is the first time in probably five years that the select board is, is actively. You know, soliciting that. So I think that works out really well, cause that gives you, you know, uh, further into what beyond what you already have. Just from having your ear in the ground. Uh, I think it'd be, it'd be really nice to, to have a retreat. You know, sometime before Labor Day, because once we have Labor Day and the fall town meeting, you know, it's kind of like. You know, I think that, that's probably our windows, the next six weeks. Um. And, you know, we're not gonna solve everything, but I think if we can come out of it with a clear shortlist, which is probably. Maybe twelve to fifteen, if we have like, I think that would be a pretty short list.
That's what I'm saying, that egg timer conversation we get, you're gonna know what those top issues are. And then there's gonna be a number of them that are just gonna flip right off the page that aren't critical or relevant at this point. And then everything in between, that's what the discussion can probably keep up some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. It's, um, and those are the ones that are concerning me where, you know, sometimes it may take five minutes. Topics. We shouldn't be digging deep into them. That's the point. It's, it's.
I mean, if it's a priority for you, can you say why?
Yeah.
And Chris has questions, then you can ask it. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, truth or not, really to educate the public.
And again, if Rick said that's priority, Angus said priority, I don't know. I got no, you know, not.
But what about me?
I would, you know, and I think that would be more helpful rather than sitting at home just putting letters in.
I, I still want us to do it at home. The reason why is because the future ones, the one, two and three, it would be good to have a list, even if.
I will do it, but I'm not sure it's gonna be very helpful. Maybe less helpful.
I plan on doing it. I'm gonna take a shot.
Or maybe you have to do both. Yeah. Another thing, just that, that's kind of a very practical thing is, uh. In terms of if there's twelve or if there's fifteen kind of hyper, we know some of those on these page study, the one thirteen quarter study, all of that. You know, we are, you know, putting in the time now to, and, and building more staff involved with the website. So we are, you know, building out these, uh, these project pages and we wanna do that. That obviously takes time to, to create and maintain and then keep current going forward. And we want to, uh. Oh, what do you know? It's brand new. That's updated since the last time I looked at it. It's, you know.
Perfect.
So, so for staff to do that, we wanna reinforce the value of that by making sure that the community is clear on what like. What really the priorities are. And then the other thing is, um, you know, with Max doing the minutes. And now, you know, he's, he backfilled, uh, uh, these packets. When I, when I, uh, when Christine Marshall was hired as the assistant clerk, she was able to backfill these to like, I think mid twenty twenty. He's now gone all the way back to the beginning of my tenure. So every open session of select word packet for five years.
Crazy.
It's crazy. So, so what I did in my last job, which I haven't, you know, which here is, you know, to Chris's point, needs to be delegated. It's not something I personally should be doing, but I actually had a grid with every, you know, kind of the X axis was the topics. And on the Y axis was the meeting dates. And I. And I just had and that that Y axis had every had every meeting date, and it just had a little X, so if you were interested in L E D streetlights. You know, you just have this handy guide and you would, okay, that was discussed at the meetings on June twenty six and, you know. So Max, I've shared that with him a while back. He'd be happy to do that, and with his data skills, you know, he he could really do a nice job. I don't wanna do on that on every special event permit, every, you know, facility we recall. But if I did forty, like anytime these topics appeared on the agenda. Just put a little X and and, you know, you even take that to the point where you could even put that on the website, have hyperlinks, and that way if someone wants to. Understand the background of why we got to it, and why the decision was made to to not do something like like the River Access and the, you know. There were meetings where that was talked about, there's minutes, there's supported documents, and and some sometimes I find myself like. Repackaging information and sending it around. Which is somewhere on here, and 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 that's not, I'm not complaining, that's natural, there's so much information, it's not. But the more for the priority items, not just the shortlist, but like anything that's really a priority, that we know is gonna come back again and again. If we can do a better job of of utilizing the information that's already been generated, instead of recreating it every time. Makes sense like soldier to sailors, I mean, how much time has passed? Since we had those major workshops, it's it's been a while. And so the next time we do get back to that, there's gonna be a learning curve to remind ourselves all we went through to get to that point, you know, so. Uh so I think it it's it can be very helpful to me as a manager to have clarity with the board on on. Not, yeah, on on priorities.
So to be clear, these dates are wrong since fiscal year twenty two.
Oh, I forget, yeah, that's, I just printed that from my slide slide deck, so. But one other thing that I've thought about a couple of times over the years, I've never initiated it, because I don't wanna start something I can't finish, but I I do like the idea. And I'll just put it out there, and then I know we gotta wrap up, but. One thing I thought about is, since there is a lot going on. Between meetings or every day, like. I wonder how how it would be received if, let's say, you know, we started doing like. A biweekly daytime Zoom meeting that was, you know, available to uh. Either the chair or a designated of each of the boards and committees to kind of convene, and we could just go, we could even just have this. Any questions on any of this, and just just to provide a clear conduit for. The committees to stay current with what they care about of what's going on, and to do so in a way that was. Uh kind of uh. You know, as a group rather, because right now they're doing that, but they're doing it like one on one, and so if there was a way to say, hey, you know, we're gonna have. Briefings every two weeks, a daytime Zoom meeting, and and I I run it and maybe a select board member, you know, participates. And uh we just say this is a standing opportunity, just an open mic, and like any questions, any suggestions, and. You know, we're not gonna cover everything every two weeks, but but I think if we, the combination of the outreach here, doing one of the boards and committees. The organizing I'm doing, the department head and the working groups. I think the more we can convey that like we have a plan, we'll work on the plan, and and if your issue's not getting the attention. You think it deserves, you really need to, you know, convince the elected board that that's gotta. That that's more important than some of what we're currently doing, uh so. I like the idea, I'm hesitant to start something anytime soon, just just as such a backlog, we we don't, you know, it's it's just, we'll have even less time to do. Do the work, but. I think the more we can just be as. You know, make the information as accessible as possible, I think if. If the residents had a front row seat to what goes on every day, I think they would probably have a tremendous amount of. Support for the decisions we make about priorities, because with a fuller picture of what's going on, I think. You know, I should definitely stand behind our decisions in terms of what is getting the time and that was not getting the time.
Well, why don't why don't we look towards that, maybe in September, you know, use the rest of the summer for us to get our priorities straight. Get the B C C outreach out, and then, um I mean, I think that could be really useful. You guys think about that?
So we've got a fair amount to do. For the end of summer.
Yeah, I also wanna look at our meeting schedule, um I don't want Angus to have his, you know, one true week of vacation and then come back to a meeting that Monday. So um. I want to try to figure out something else, he's not dealing with a packet either before or after the. So are you around in August, do you have any other plans with me to work on?
Um I I do have a.
Probably not gonna be zooming in on that. What about your schedule, Chris?
Be there most time.
Yeah, so I'm I'm. At this point, um planning to be gone from the twenty second, we have a meeting currently scheduled for the twenty first. And then I'm planning on meeting on the twenty second and we'll be gone. Yeah, through it all, I mean, you know, I take a lot of the takes, but um.
Right, so I'll I'll work with Angus on that. Like, right now, we're getting to the seventh.
Yeah, and I don't, I, you know, I'll. Try to be as flexible as the Senate House, and. Um you know, the trip, if we end up rescheduling the meeting. It's possible, but you know, um.
Angus put a Thursday meeting following your vacation be more manageable, or you're gonna be slammed just with regular stuff?
You know, I I I definitely, whether the meeting goes forward as scheduled on, whether uh seventh or whether it's pushed pushed uh. A few days later, I would definitely, you know, be working with you to to try to have agenda items that don't be. Where the prep can either be done by the end of next week uh. Or can be done by other departments that don't need my my direct involvement. And I I think there might be enough issue, you know, items like that to have a full agenda, it might not be quite as. Uh quite as full as we normally have, but but I also think something like this, I mean, you have a ton of raw material, so we could. Use some of the time to talk about some of these items.
All right, um so.
So so actually, you know, I mean, we do, I guess we need to wrap up and and move on to to the executive session, but. So you pointed out, I think there were three people, and there were three employees doing this. Um and the question is, what works, how would you see the the dynamic to you?
I think this will work because I can then sort it by, you know.
Okay, so I just put in numbers, I just.
So do that on here. Put A one, A two, A three, A one.
Okay, so you like it on the matrix?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think so, okay, so because last time we used.
Yeah, we each wrote something different, and so that was hard for him to do. Yeah, so I think this is good, and then you could sort it.
Yeah, right, okay, no, it's funny, when I looked at this, I did see these columns, but I. It didn't sink in with the uh.
Yeah, so that's the idea, uh. Yeah, because then all the A ones, those will be right at the top and so forth, so. Uh I think that'd be a good start.
So could we do this for the seventh, because you wouldn't have to do any preparation for this?
If, yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Could you send this to me in Excel?
Yeah, I'll send it all to you in Excel. Yeah, yeah.
What do you think about that? All right, why don't you make a motion to go to the executive section?
Yeah, I'm making a motion during the objective section. Yeah, Master General Chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eight, three. To discuss strategy with respect to client bargaining or litigation, the meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation.
All right, all in favor? Red eye.
I wonder who does those commercials. Yeah.